At this point, Kenmore City Council is now in session. And for the record, Brent Smith is excused. Everybody else is present. So, business agenda. Presentation and discussion of the final recommendations on the 2015 Comprehensive Plan Update. Ms. Smith, our Community Development Director, and Ms. Anderson, our Senior Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will ask Lori to kind of give you sort of a quick overview of where we've been on this journey with the Comprehensive Plan and next steps. And then I would like to turn it over to Chair Nugent. Planning Commission has some comments on their recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and City Council members, and Chair Nugent and Planning Commission members. We are here tonight to present the Planning Commission's final recommendation on the 2015 Comprehensive Plan Update. This is something you've seen in various iterations over the last several months in several different joint meetings. As you know, the original plan was adopted in 2001, and the city has periodically reviewed different sections. In 2012, the shoreline sub-element was done. In 2013, the parks, recreation, and open space element was redone. And last year, the transportation element, surface water element, and a good portion of the land use element were revisited. So the focus of this 2015 update has really been on three older elements: the housing element, the public services element, and the utilities element. And then the vision statement, and a series of policies related to healthy, active living, sustainability, and regional transportation. All of these things you reviewed in your joint meeting on April 20th with the Planning Commission. Those were the more substantive changes. Tonight, you're seeing the full package of materials. And in almost every element, the background information has been updated. And there are some policy changes generally related to consistency, or updated information, or requests from other agencies. So after your joint meeting on April 20th, then on April 21st, the Planning Commission held their public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Update. There were four people who spoke, and there were two folks who submitted written comments. The Planning Commission deliberated and then made some changes, primarily in response to comments they had heard from you at the joint meeting, and mostly about the vision statement. So I wanted just to touch very briefly on those vision statement changes. At the joint meeting, the council had expressed an interest in moving up the bullet point about volunteerism. The Planning Commission is recommending that. They, in shifting things down, moved down a bullet point about arts, culture, and history. They rewrote a bullet point that had to do with healthy living, and there was a phrase about healthy citizenry, or healthy lifestyles. Anyway, they reworked that phrase, and hopefully the recommendation is something that you would be satisfied with. They added the word multifamily in place of higher-density housing in areas around the downtown. And then they added the concept of fun to the introductory statement of the vision statement. So as you know, the deadline for adoption of the Comprehensive Plan is June 30th, the end of this month. It has to be sent in to the state. And so we have an ordinance adoption scheduled for June 22nd. If the City Council wants to make substantive changes, or changes outside the scope of what the Planning Commission is recommending, then the City Council would need to hold a public hearing. And that, too, would happen on June 22nd. So before I turn it over to Chair Nugent, I wanted to mention three technical changes that you'll see when the ordinance comes forward. Two of those changes are in the housing element, and were actually prompted by questions that you asked when we were together for the joint meeting last time. One change is to note that only one affordable housing project has received an impact fee exemption. The housing element speaks to several projects, and in fact, there's only one. It's also a correction to note that there are six mobile home parks in the city, not five, as it stated in the element, although two of those six are owned by the same person. So there could be some confusion about that. The last technical change I just want to call out has to do with some holdover Northshore, King County Northshore Plan policies that have been hanging around since incorporation with the upcoming ordinance. You would see the repeal of all of those Northshore Plan policies, with the exception of a couple which speak to the properties that are covered by the P suffix conditions. And that, those two policies are actually referenced in the draft land use element that you have before you. That would be a section in the ordinance, so I just wanted to call that out, so you would be aware that that was there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chair Nugent.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And tonight, Vice Chair Kugler will be offering our comments about deliberations and recommendations since we last met.
Thank you. I think our last conversation was really helpful in identifying some of those small tweaks and revisions that we were able to make since our last meeting. Lori already touched on some of the changes that we incorporated into the vision statement based on your feedback, the element of fun, making sure that we emphasize healthy while supporting health and wellness in our citizens through the services and amenities that we provide. And the other thing that I wanted to call out is that there were a lot of changes to the public utilities and human services portions of the Comprehensive Plan. And we didn't inquire about some of the statistics, because you'd noticed that many of those statistics have changed pretty dramatically. And what we were told by the staff is that a lot of that data was pre-existing from when King County, when we were under King County ownership, so a lot of it was no longer relevant. Some of the service providers have changed the way that they determine or quantify level of service. For example, they explained that the police station no longer determines level of service based on how many incidents or crimes there are, but more on the types of crimes that are actually happening, which I think makes sense. And then they were also able to update whatever statistics they could, either through public documents or through city staff and current knowledge. So things like the largest employers in Kenmore, for example, was based off of information from the Assistant City Manager and other staff. So we just wanted to call that out, because we did think that those were some big changes between the previous version of the plan and the current state it's in with you now. And that was it.
Okay. So we invite the council to propose or ask questions.
Questions?
I guess I don't really have a question, but I like how you rewrote the vision statement, and I like it a lot. Thanks.
Councilmember Sperry?
I don't have any specific questions. Again, I just want to say thank you. It was a huge amount of work, and it's always good, you know, for me to go ahead and re-look at that. And, you know, I did see a lot of the update and the changes, and so it's a really interesting big picture that sometimes, you know, we lose when we're, okay, what do we do about this little thing? And so it's actually very helpful, and kind of re-envisioned me on, okay, why we do all this, or why you do all this. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Again, no questions, but just a comment. It felt like a really collaborative process, so we gave our input, we went and let you work really hard, with a lot of help from the staff. We came back, we touched bases often enough, it felt like we were communicating. I think in the past, when I was on the downtown task force, I think maybe there was some lack of communication, which created some problems. And so I think this was a much better process. Thank you.
And if I could respond, I think that's why there's so little to add, because we did cover a lot of ground at the last joint meeting.
So I just want to be clear. Is there any more questions from the council? I want to be clear, I think my questions are a little bit more encompassing of the changes that I saw in the Comprehensive Plans, at least what was underlined in yellow. And just looking for a little clarification, if that's possible. So basically, then, on page 64 of the Comprehensive Plan, you're talking, and I think this was talking about view corridor, no, this was talking about circulator routes. And just out of curiosity, it looks like 175th Street has moved, moved southward. Am I seeing that correctly?
Hold on a sec.
That's fine. That's in the Comprehensive Plan, right.
So are you looking at the map which says downtown circulation concept?
Correct.
Okay. That has not changed.
Okay, so that's the original thing that we saw from years ago with the circulator route, with that re-working, redoing, whatever, of 175th, correct? No changes?
It has not changed.
Okay. Fabulous. I mean, I'm really very appreciative of the work you guys have done. I'm just looking for some clarifications. So then, if we go to page 79, it's another map. And it's entitled Preservation of Existing and Potential Views in the Downtown Vicinity.
Has not changed.
I'm just curious now, because I'm looking at the view maps, especially in association with Lake Point. What is that going to do for any type of height on that facility for multifamily? Is that going to affect any changes? Is that going to prohibit anything? Is that going to encourage? Or?
The rules haven't changed, so what it...
Which is 200 feet back from the shoreline, you can go hide.
The rules haven't changed, so when we adopted the shoreline master plan in 2013, we looked very carefully at what the approved Lake Point development would allow. And the shoreline rules that were approved would allow the master plan development as it was approved, so it should be fine.
Okay. So theoretically, if this property does get developed at some point, and they want to go 10 stories, that's certainly permissible, as long as it's 200 feet back from the shoreline. Is that right?
The 200-foot back from the shoreline, I think it's a little misleading to say that. The 200-foot is the shoreline jurisdiction. That's where the shoreline rules apply. It doesn't mean to say that you can't do anything within that 200 feet. It's just where the shoreline rules apply. And if you recall, when you approved that shoreline plan, you approved sort of allowed things to be closer on the inner harbor area.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? And then it was more in compliance with the critical area rules along the Sumamish River. So you don't have to set back 200 feet. There are certain restrictions on how close you can get, and how high you can get, which are determined by the shoreline rules. And I don't have all those details in front of me.
But basically, we're not changing anything on that.
We are not changing anything on that. It's the same map, yes.
That would be implementation strategies. And you're talking about new programs, rules, regulations that would need to be addressed in implementation strategies. And you're talking about master plan requirements for public and private facilities. I'm just wondering what private facilities are.
The name of the district is called Public and Private Facilities. And so a private facility would be, for example, something like Bastier that has a master plan. It's a private...
So much larger than a private business?
Correct. Yeah.
Like St. Vincent de Paul, or something like that?
Correct. It would be properties that fell into that zone, and those are things like schools and...
Golf courses.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that would be a private facility. That's a...
Okay.
Although that zone golf course, that's actually not a public and private facility. But that...
On page 125, you're talking about the affordable housing component. And thank you, guys. You guys did a really good job on starting to bring that out. I think that's something that we can certainly work with and build from. And thank you for the effort that you put into that. 129, you had some proposed changes to transportation element, and the three highlighted areas, I think, are really good, and I'm glad to see those in there. Thank you. We're getting to the end. 195, what's happened to concurrency? Concurrenty looks completely struck out. Has concurrency done away with?
Concurrenty is very much alive, but this was written...
But there's no money to fund it?
No. The whole discussion of concurrency is something that the city is working on. And so this was just old language that is going to be refreshed with this new review.
Thank you, guys. I mean, I think you did a really, really good job, and I'm very pleased with what I've read. So thank you all very much. Anything else from the council? Councilmember Herbig?
Sorry, just one slightly nitpicky thing when I was going through here. On page seven, we're talking about areas that have been incorporated. And there's a sentence that says that there's no unincorporated area around Kenmore's borders. But the section of Snohomish County that we border is, in fact, unincorporated to this point. It's just super small, stuck out.
Yeah, no, that could well be. I was thinking King County when that was written.
Yeah.
But that is a point of clarification.
Deputy Mayor?
Just want to throw my comment in, that great job. Thanks for all the effort you put in over this last year. It's a big job, and thank you so much.
Anybody with any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your efforts. If there's nothing more for us, then thank you.
Well, the ordinance will be coming back before you for adoption in a couple of weeks.
Right. And we'll look forward to it. So, next item. Better watch out, Alan. Staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm going to need your help on something important. And that has to do with Sound Transit III, their system plan projects that they want to put on the ballot in November 2016. So I actually have this on the agenda for next week under staff report, and so we'll discuss it more then, and I'll have some more materials that we'll be uploading to the agenda a little bit later this week. But I thought I'd talk a little bit about it right now, given some meetings that Chris Overlyse and I had with Sound Cities Association, and also with Sound Transit this afternoon. And we had a meeting this afternoon with Rick Ilgen Fritz. He's the Executive Director of Planning, Environment, and Project Development at Sound Transit, and several of his coworkers were there. And we talked about some possible requests or projects that we would like to see in Sound Transit III. And I need your additional guidance and clarification next week on this. But the timing is such that we should start thinking about this now, and start moving on this now. It's important for us to be approaching Sound Transit board members, and so I am going to need your help in doing so, especially the Sound Transit board members that represent our area, including Mayor Fred Butler of Issaquah, and Mayor Marchioni of Redmond, and Mayor Balducci in Bellevue. And one of our problems is we don't have a member of Sound Transit Board that's up here, and that's been that way for a long time, since Jack Crawford, Mayor of Kenmore, was on that board. And they still remember him and speak fondly of him. They told a really great story about him and his valiant efforts as a transit board member way back when. But this ball is moving, rolling quickly. This train is leaving the station, and we need to get on it. And so we're going to be formulating a strategy for you over the next couple of days that we'd like you to take a look at and discuss with us on June 8th. But in particular, just for tonight, I'd like to call to your attention this last page of this handout that I just handed out. And I can send a copy that way. But there's a schedule of public meetings that we need to fly the flag at, the Kenmore flag, figuratively speaking. In particular, I think we should be at at least one of the Seattle public meetings, and definitely need to be at the Redmond meeting. And so if you all could check your schedules and see which ones you could be at, I would really appreciate that. And I don't need to know tonight. Sound Transit is, they're going to kick off their public process this Thursday. The website that you see in the handout goes live, so it's on that third page. This soundtransit3.org goes live on Thursday. And they expect public comments back by July 8th, but agency comments, like cities, back by July 15th. I'm also in talks with Shoreline and Bothell about joint letters that we can write. Just high level, we're looking at supporting Shoreline's efforts to create bus rapid transit on State Route 523, which is 145th. They're going to start final design on that light rail station on 145th at I-5 here in the next few months. And they're planning only a 500-car parking garage, but they're expecting thousands of users. So if they're only going to be able to park 500 cars, how is everybody else going to get there, especially given the poor state of transit affairs on 145th as they exist today? So supporting Shoreline's efforts, and then our efforts to talk about future light rail. Obviously, we don't think light rail can be constructed in ST3. It's not vetted enough and studied enough, so we're talking about a light rail study on the 522 corridor. But in the meantime, install bus rapid transit. And then lastly is parking. And I want you to think about this, and give me your direction next week. So think about this over the next few days. But, you know, we have lack of parking for commuters here in Kenmore, and our park-and-ride fills up rather quickly. So do our, not just the one park-and-ride, but the other parking rides we have fill up really quickly in the mornings, and then they kind of spill out into the neighborhoods. And with Kenmore Village going away, it's even going to get worse. Kenmore Village park-and-hide capacity going away, I should say. So contemplate whether we should ask for structured parking in ST3. And if so, do we need a specific location? Could it be in downtown Bothell? For example, Bothell got $40 million in ST2 for a parking garage. And long story short, that amount got reduced to $5 million. Well, that $5 million isn't going to be enough to build the parking garage they had hoped for. And they're looking at doing a parking garage that would be on that big downtown lot that's vacant right now. It would be part of a mixed-use project, and it would be a public-private partnership where, and this is all kind of hypothetical still, but their parking garage would be used by transit in the day, and then by residents and restaurant folks and stuff in the evening. So it'd be kind of a dual-use park-and-ride. Should we help Bothell push for that to be fully funded, or should we ask for our own structured parking? And if so, where would it be? At the Kenmore Park-and-Ride, or would it be part of a Lake Point project? And could it be that kind of a dual-use scenario that I just described over in Bothell if it were in Lake Point? So that's the kind of discussion I'm hoping that we have. But any questions or thoughts? Yes, Councilmember Herbig?
Whatever happened, we were discussing with LFP a while ago about working with them towards a park-and-ride, or towards parking for commuters. Is that dead, or is this something we could still pursue?
Yeah, we need to pursue that. So they had grant funding for a park-and-ride, and trying to remember the status of that grant funding. I don't think that it got spent. We were offering to have it spent over here, but I don't think they wanted to give up that money. And so they still have it. But I don't know if it got spent, or recalled back into the state budget or what, but I can find out. And so Lake Forest Park needs to be part of this conversation, because if we do a joint letter with us and Shoreline and no Lake Forest Park, that will look kind of weird. But they have different dynamics going on right now in Lake Forest Park, and so getting them to sign a joint letter might be not as easy right now.
So I know a number of us are going to be at the AWC meeting in Wenatchee, and that happens to fall during the 24th and the 25th and the 23rd. So at least two of us will not be able to attend Redmond or the daytime Seattle event. But I know I'm certainly available and will attend the Seattle evening event.
So even, I think it's important that we have Kenmore people there. But even more importantly is meeting individually with board members. In my meetings with Sound Cities today, and also with Sound Transit staff, that's where they said we could be most effective, is reaching out individually to Sound Transit board members.
Yeah, I'm on a number of committees with Fred Butler and with Mayor Marchioni, so I'm more than happy to talk with them.
The other thing is, Sound Cities also recommended highly that it not just be the city, the cities that make a push. That's important, that we send a strong message and write letters and stuff. But citizens and citizen groups can be really powerful. Students, they say, are really powerful messengers, so Bastier students, U-Dub Bothell students. But if we know of any citizens in this room, or in the community, that use transit, that could step up and be community leaders, more from a grassroots level, we're really looking for folks that can step up and help us with that in the next few weeks. So if you could keep your eyes peeled and give us ideas for citizens that we could reach out to who use transit, and who'd be willing to speak out and help lead.
There's points that might help us recruit.
Yes, thank you. And that's another thing they talked about was today, was getting a really good document that is sharp and professional, and can quickly and easily convey our key points. And that's all I have. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to mention, actually, because I work in Redmond, and the city of Redmond actually reached out to me to invite me to a planning session specifically on this for the city of Redmond on behalf of my company, because we have college students. And it's an interesting idea. They basically invited 20 to 50 different representatives from a variety of different organizations, us being a college, senior citizens, affordable housing units, a bunch of different groups, like what you're saying. And we're basically going to spend more than half a day, I think on June 13th, basically coming up and compiling all of our ideas for how we want transit to work in the city of Redmond. So that might be something we could do for the city of Redmond, I mean, Kenmore as well, to collect all of that input from a variety of different groups and get a more solid voice in support of this.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, reports? Councilmember Danuski?
Getting together the street fair coming up on the 27th, and some waterfront races, and a kids' little drive-in movie, so that'll end up being a very fun day. So thanks to Deb for being one of the leaders on that. So thanks to Deb for being one of the leaders on that.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry?
I just have a question about the-
The street fair. First of all, I love it that we have a tag now. I love Kenmore. I want that everywhere. So I don't know who to direct this to, but I guess I'll look your way, Deborah. Do you know if the library has been asked to do a booth or anything or is that someone else's department?
Yeah, they have been asked.
Oh, perfect.
Aline approached them and I'm going to be talking to her later tonight. But I mean, they, they wanted to do something they hadn't quite figured out what.
Kind of defined it. Perfect. I'm so glad. That's great. Thank you for tuning in.
Deputy Mayor?
I don't have anything tonight other than the fact that- I'm sorry. I don't have anything other than the fact that David and I will be, well, David will be here next week. I will be gone next week. So maybe I can check in on the phone that Monday night, the 8th. Okay? Thank you.
There's National League of Cities meeting committees and I've got the advisory council board meetings, so we will be at that. I only, I have one thing. And I just want to get the council's feedback on this. There is a program that's holding around the United States. A number of cities are part of it. And I think it would be good if Kenmore got to be part of this program. And it's going to, would happen in October. And it's encouraging the residents to put a purple porch light on their door, on their front doors. It is to call awareness to domestic violence. It's something that we could do and it's something that we could show our support in, in ending. So something to think about. And if you guys are, don't have strong objections, maybe it's a program that we could get behind to, to support this effort to end domestic violence. Councilmember Sperry?
Obviously, domestic violence is, you know, something that's very serious and want to take seriously. The reason I'm looking a little puzzled is, it might be worth researching this, but I think that there's something around like Halloween where people do a similar thing, saying like they don't want sugar or something like that.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. But I would just check into that. I mean, I guess the one thing too about that is, you know, I know there's the symbolism of the ribbon and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, I don't know how meaningful that is. I don't know how well-known that would be. So I just maybe-
Sure.
Do a little more research and kind of see.
I know Carnation is doing it here and we're going to be getting a presentation. I think, you know about it from the city managers?
From Carnation?
Yeah, from Carnation.
No, I know Mountain Lake Terrace does it.
Okay.
And they have a way for citizens to purchase these bulbs and-
Right.
Yeah.
So for those of you that are going to the next Sound Cities dinner, they will be having a presentation on this, a five-minute rise presentation. So it's something that I thought that might be good to do in our community because I think it's something that we really need to, to bring to the public awareness and to, to do everything we can do to, to end it. So with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can get them from home. You can get them from home.
Short meeting here.
Yeah. Great.